Going to start in about one minute.
I felt, doing well, yourself?
There you go.
Not bad.
They are, you don't have to get right on. The green, it's on. So.
The other twenty-two hours, we're good.
Yeah.
Oh, you rotated.
Let's call to order this work session of the County Unit District Number Five Board of Education and Town of Normal, Town Council. Note that all members of the boards are present here, and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item of business is public comment, as appropriate with the rules of Unit Five's policies. We'll take public comment if there is anyone here wishing to speak. One more time, I'll ask, and then hold your peace. Is there anyone here wishing to speak about tonight's meeting? Great. We'll go to some introductory comments by Jim Hayek and myself, and then get into the meat of the meeting here. And Jim, and as a guest here, do you want to go ahead and get started?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Kuss. First off, I want to thank the Town of Normal for agreeing to this joint meeting and for hosting us tonight. As all of you are aware, Unit Five and the Town of Normal have been linked together in a successful relationship for going on seventy years. With over sixteen hundred employees, Unit Five is one of the largest employers in McLean County, and we proudly serve over thirteen thousand students and their families on a daily basis. Unit Five pride runs deep in our community, and we feel the high-quality education delivered by the district has contributed to making Bloomington Normal one of the most attractive places to live and work in Illinois. Unit Five's mission of educating each student to achieve personal excellence, along with our vision of being a district of destination, convey our commitment to building a strong educational foundation that helps our community not just sustain, but thrive as we move into the future. Unfortunately, today, there are many factors at work that make achieving our mission and vision harder than ever. Our budget remains a challenge, both in getting payments from the state and in having enough money to adequately educate our students. While costs continue to rise, student educational funding has not kept pace. The lack of adequate funding impacts class sizes, student services, and the programs we are able to offer. Cuts in social services and unfunded mandates have also had a direct impact on our ability to meet our goals. Unit Five does a tremendous job of managing the funding it receives, but there is a significant strain on our system. I see tonight as an opportunity for us to share information and open a dialogue about a strengthened partnership between Unit Five and the town. We will hear shortly about some of the great ways we are currently partnering, and I hope it leads to innovative thinking about additional ways we can work together. We will also discuss building a committee to keep this conversation going. As your public school district, we want our goals to be aligned to your goals. We want to continue to be a part of the success of Normal and our greater community by providing an educational system that attracts families and businesses to our area and prepares our students for an exciting future, and I'm sure you do too. Again, we sincerely appreciate your time and energy, and we look forward to our continued partnership.
Thank you, Jim. And I would like to express my thanks to some of the council members and board members who saw it as a good idea to revive this partnership and this conversation. And I think the conversation is the key to this partnership. A mutual understanding of each other's issues and problems and how we might assist each other in dealing with those problems. I've always said in my years as mayor in the Town of Normal that a community like Normal and a community like Bloomington, the bedrock of those communities and the community's success is their educational programs, the schools that are in that, in those communities. And if we lose the vitality of our schools, we will lose our community eventually. There are other communities around central Illinois, as you know, that are struggling with population, struggling with new businesses coming into the community. And as you drill down into those issues, you will see that it's the trouble that they're having in some of their school systems that is a big part of that. So, coming together, working together to see where we can have mutual assistance, things, you know, it might be small things, it might be big things. But collaboration, cooperation, and communication, I think, is key for the Town of Normal and Unit Five. So I'm looking forward to tonight's conversation. We'll move on to review of past and current collaborative programs, projects, and initiatives. And I think Mark Peterson, City Manager, and Dr. Mark Daniel, Superintendent, are going to go over some of those issues, and we can go to Q and A on some of that.
Let me just jump in, if I could, Dr. Daniel. We provided you at your place a listing that really is a collaborative effort in and of itself. We worked together, the staff of the town and the school district, in developing a list of all of the collaborative or cooperative projects that we have undertaken in the past and those that we are currently undertaking. And frankly, it's an impressive list. When it was all done, I was amazed. I don't know about you, Mark, but very impressive, and I think it just speaks to the interrelationship between the school district and the Town of Normal. And I agree with the mayor. Successful communities are only as successful as their public school system, and it's essential that we work together. And I think this demonstrates all the ways we do work together. And I think there are lots of other things that we can do if we're proactive in identifying areas where we have common interests and common goals and where we can share resources, stretch local tax dollars, which is more important now than ever, and do so in a way that benefits both communities. So again, there's a lot of, there's kind of what you said, Mayor, there's some small things here, there's a lot of big things. I think when many people think of cooperation between the community and the school district, they think of shared facilities. And oh, boy, we do a lot of facility sharing, and that's terrific. But there's lots of other things in here that most people don't even know about, a few things that I didn't know about. So I was, I learned a little bit through this exercise as well. So I don't, I don't know if our plan is to go through each individual item. We can certainly talk about some of these specifics if you have questions. But I think this really serves as a springboard for further discussions on what else can we do. This is a great starting point, but I think there's a lot more that can be accomplished together, so.
And I would concur with that, Mark, that as you look at all these collaborative efforts, and we could highlight some in particular ones, but because of the length of these, I think this is certainly a place for us to start. And as we now dovetail in perhaps to the other piece where we start reviewing what our committee will look like and some of the groundwork in that area. I will tell you, I too was amazed at all the various partnerships that we do have. And I'm just, I'm so appreciative that we are here talking about how to even, to further expand them. And with that said, if you have any questions as a board or as boards, we'd be willing to address those, or if you have any particular ones you might think you'd like to be highlighted.
Thank you. Questions or comments from board members or council members? Okay. Our next item is to discussion regarding the proposed creation of a standing liaison committee to consist of representatives of both the Board of Education and the Town of Normal to promote and foster improved communication, coordination, and cooperation between the district and the town. And this is, I'll make a few introductory comments on this. This was something that we had done, I don't know, has it been ten years, Mark, that we?
Probably further back than that, I hate to say.
Where we did that, and it got off to a pretty good start, and there was some good cooperation. But unfortunately, it just didn't, it didn't last. And I think that's going to be our first, first challenge in doing this, is to, is to keep this liaison committee relevant and active. Because once it loses relevance, then it loses interest, and we don't want to see it go away again. So I think you've all read over what the structure of this is. RC, have you got a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, just maybe a few thoughts. And I know that I've spoken to both Dr. Daniel and Mr. Peterson, as well as several of my colleagues on council and some of my contemporaries on the Unit Five School Board about this particular idea. And I, and I know sometimes that it can be, you know, this is a pretty busy group of people. Everybody's involved in a lot of things, everybody out there is. And you hate to add yet another meeting to the schedule. But I think sometimes we all get so busy that we tend to develop a tunnel vision on our own issues. And certainly, I realize Unit Five is facing a number of issues, Town of Normal's facing a number of issues. Sometimes we're very excited about the exciting things that we have ahead of us, and, you know, maybe we just don't communicate in the way that we should. So I'm very pleased to see this moving forward. I hope it becomes permanent. I think it just puts a mechanism in place to make sure that we're always communicating with each other to the degree that we are. As many of you, if not all of you, know, I'm a Unit Five parent with three girls, a very proud Unit Five parent. And I think you all do a tremendous job, and that's without factoring the resource challenges. You layer that on top, and it really becomes, the work you're doing becomes even more impressive. So I just want to put that out there. It just, and to echo Mayor Kuss's comments, he's absolutely right, and I don't want to name any names. But there are so many communities throughout the Midwest, it becomes a feedback cycle. Problems with the, with the school district, people move out, property values decline, problems within the community, more problems within the school district. And before you know it, people are moving to the suburbs and the exurbs for better schools. This is one of the, it's one of the things we don't have to worry about now in Bloomington and Normal with both Unit Five and District Eighty-seven, because the school districts are so strong. But we can never take that for granted. And hopefully, this is a step forward in not taking that for granted.
Mike?
I echo what RC said. And one of the things that, when I first ran for the board six years ago, you know, I talked about communication and how important communication is. And I think as we continue to build that communication process up amongst, not only internally within our own board, but with, with the town, developing, you know, the process, right? So at some point, somewhere down the road, we're all going to be off this board, or boards, and others are going to come in. So I think it's important that we build this process in place, build the great foundation, and so it can continue for years down the road. And not only through the next four, five, six years, but twenty-five, thirty years down the road. And so I'm looking vision down the road as much as I am short-term. I'm looking at that long-term vision for, you know, as I pick it up and I see a hundred and fifty years in Normal, Illinois, I'm thinking a hundred years down the road when, you know, we're all, well, some of us may be still here, but most of them will be long gone. But that's, that's a big thing, right? I mean, building that process and building that collaboration and setting that example that we can go forward with as, as a group and as a community. And to Mayor Kuss about how education is critical in any community and part of that foundation. So I just want to echo that.
Peter?
Yes, and I was on the prior committee, and I knew we were looking at how we want to bring that together and make it sustainable. I think this is a real good foundation in terms of a structure. And so that both the board and the council all know who the committee is and the ability to fund ideas together and plan for how we're going to collaborate. I think this is excellent.
Great. Jeff?
We, I think we all could sit here and echo everyone's comments to this point, but a couple of things. One, when public bodies convene, typically, people expect there's going to be some kind of action. And that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. And I think that's one of the values of having a committee in place and having it structured the way it's structured is that when there is action that is necessary by each board separately, you know, they've, they've done something together in the meantime to help, to help bring understanding to what those actions, the, the impact those actions might be on each other. So I think that's one of the important things of a committee such as this. I think too is awareness, you know, we're going to get a budget overview, which everybody loves budget overviews, right? But we're, we're going to get that here tonight. And that, and we may have some awareness. We obviously are aware of the things Jim talked about with, with the state to some degree. But we don't, we don't necessarily feel the impact like, like you do. And we'll have a better unaware, awareness and understanding simply because we got together and talked about it and saw a presentation together. I think a lot of times, people assume that different entities understand or know what's going on with others, you know? Illinois State University, it's such a big presence in our community. Well, surely, they know what's going on with the Town of Normal, they're in the Town of Normal. Surely, we know what's going on with them, they're, you know, a big employer and a big boon to our population and all that periodically through, you know, as the year ebbs and flows. But, but we don't necessarily know, you know, the inside story on what's happening there. They don't necessarily know ours if we don't have something like this, a forum like this, to share, to share that. So there may be, you know, no action items tonight necessarily, other than, you know, a consensus, maybe to agree to move ahead here. But, but there's, there's an awareness that grows from these types of things. The other thing is, you know, part of that understanding, the nature of today's media is such that getting a clear understanding of somebody else's position is difficult. And so, you know, hearing it straight from one another, I think, is really a critic, is more critic. It's interesting, it's more critical now in an age where there's more communication than ever, because you have to narrow in on good communication, you know? And so I think it's, it's time to do this, and I know you folks feel the same way. And I think it's, you know, tonight's a, tonight's a start, but on an ongoing basis, I think it'll just make a stronger community.
Kathleen?
May I just say a few words that, as I sit and listen to the other comments? RC, I'm going to take us back to our days on the Planning Commission. And so many times in that period of time, which was in the mid-two thousand to two thousand and ten or eleven or twelve, there would be cases that would come to us on the Planning Commission, which of course was land use for the most part. And so oftentimes, I remember sitting in those meetings saying, but does the school district know about this? Because many times it was, you know, three hundred homes or six hundred homes. And a lot of it then was in northeast Normal, that was kind of the hot area. And so I would come home from those meetings, and I would share with my husband. We are, I'm going to call ourselves retired Unit Five parents, we're not former. There was always a piece of it in our hearts. And I would say, you know, I just really wish there was, there was better communication, because I wasn't sure if we all knew what was going on. And so when I told my husband that this meeting was tonight, he says, well, finally. So I'm glad to be here, and I'm very inspired by the remarks so far, and inspired that this is going to be something going forward. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on this?
Mayor, can I just, I just want to share a very specific example where I think the presence of this committee would have been helpful. And it was last December, as you all recall. We had threw an item on your agenda at the last minute involving Rivian Automotive, a very, an important item that came out, kind of out of the blue to many of you, even though some of us had been working on it for a while. It came to fruition over a matter of several days. And we were forced to go out to all the taxing bodies, Unit Five included, and lay this fairly complex agreement on your table and say, we need you to approve this. And it evolved substantial tax incentives. And you all, I was there, Mr. McBride was there in the audience, and you all made it very clear that you were a little frustrated that this came out of the blue without a whole lot of warning, without, there were a lot of questions that we couldn't answer. So it was a bit of a leap of faith. You all are dealing with some, particularly on the board, are dealing with some very difficult financial choices. And now you're asked, you're being asked to provide these incentives. And I want to say I very much appreciate, whether it was a leap of faith or not, your, your willingness to unanimously approve that agreement. But I also can tell you that we heard loud and clear your frustrations. And Mr. McBride and I talked on the way out. And I want to give credit to Mr. McBride. He'd been talking about, we need to do some things with the school district. And, and boy, as we walked out the door, I said, you're right, we need to, we need to do something. Because I think had this structure been in place, even though this, this item still kind of came quickly, I think you would all have felt a little more comfortable. And hopefully, we would have had an opportunity to communicate a little bit more. But I think the fact that we would have had an existing relationship would have probably made everybody feel a little bit better. So fortunately, thank you again, board members, for your support of that. I think it was the right thing. And I think every day, we hear more and more positive things coming out of Rivian. And I really believe they will far exceed the expectations that we had back then in December. But I do think that's a, that's a perfect example where, had this committee been in place, you probably would have been a lot more comfortable acting on that agreement. So another reason to go forward.
Thank you. Hurley? I think we can step to the next item, and that's.
Mayor, what, what we will do is, is I'll work with Dr. Daniel. We'll put this in the form of a memorandum of understanding between the two bodies, and then we can act on it independently. And then we'll move forward and get the first meeting scheduled once the representatives are appointed. And I'm going to step away and let Mr. Hickman come up here and, or I guess.
And I'll introduce, this is Marty Hickman, he's our business manager. So he'll be presenting the financial.
And to your comment, Mr. Peterson, I think that, I think we can pull this committee together pretty quickly and get started right away. I think there's some real strong interest to, to get this moving along.
Good evening. Maybe not surprisingly, the budget presentation is generally my favorite part. Notwithstanding the, the issues that we do face. You know, many of us, myself included, before I became employed by Unit Five several years ago, thought of the school district in the context of our own lives. Maybe it's where our kids go to school, so we think of it as maybe a small elementary school. Or, or maybe it's just where we went to school, not our kids. Where in reality, we're actually a fairly large, complex organization. And I believe our budget really reflects that. So Mr. Hayek mentioned a couple of these in his opening remarks, but speaking to the complexity, you know, with, you mentioned the student count and the employees, but the number of buildings that we take care of, thirty different buildings. And then especially complex, over nine thousand eight hundred students we're transporting two times a day with a fleet of a hundred and forty buses. So we're a very large, complex organization. So from a budget standpoint this evening, what, what I hope to do is just give a very brief, very high-level overview of what our budget looks like at the school district, along with a little bit of history on some of the items. The numbers that I'm going to speak about this evening are from our original adopted budget for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. Our actual June thirty, two thousand and seventeen ending numbers will be very different than the adopted budget, primarily due to lack of state payments, which I'll speak to a little bit more in a further slide. So what you see at this, this pie chart in front of you is the breakdown of all of the different funds that we have in our school district budget. And the one that stands out there at almost ninety-eight million dollars is our education fund. So when you think of what happens in the classroom and educating our children, generally, that's the fund it's coming from. The other notables on, on this slide are the twenty-three million and a half. That's our bond and interest. So in the high-growth years, when the school district, the student count was increasing every year, we had to build several buildings, and we're still paying those debts off today. That said, over the next roughly five years, that piece, the bond and interest piece, and I'm going to speak to this a little bit more in a future slide, actually goes away. Then we fully paid off. So what makes up the revenue on that previous slide? And what I'm going to focus on this evening is the biggest fund, the education fund. So in the education fund, almost sixty-nine percent of the revenue is from local sources. And the biggest percentage of that is actually local property taxes. The next biggest piece, over twenty-three percent, is revenue that comes from the state. So as you hear about the budget woes and the lack of payments from the state, while we're not the most dependent school district on state funds, certainly at over twenty percent of our revenue stream, it's significant for us. And then the federal, you see, it stays fairly consistent, or it has over the years, a little over eight percent. Although in this political climate, there's some questions even at the federal level as far as what kind of revenue we're going to receive in the future. So then to look at the revenue sources then a little bit further, most of our local revenue is the local property tax piece that I mentioned before. So if you look at the graph there in front of you, you'll see the, the change in the assessed value for our school district over the past several years. And you'll notice back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, a lot of growth in the community, therefore, a lot of increased value. And that piece of the revenue for the school district was, was very solid, very good. But then you see what, what started to happen over the next few years in bottoming out there in two thousand and twelve, at actually a loss in, in value. But since then, being growth, but certainly not what we seen back there in the early two thousands. One notable on the, on the separate fund, operation and maintenance. The operation and maintenance fund, so it's how we care for our buildings, how we repair our buildings primarily, that's almost ninety-five percent dependent on local property taxes. There's almost zero state revenue that flows into there. So the only real chance for increased revenue to meet our expense demands, which are always increasing, comes from the, the growth in property tax or property value. So this shows our school district compared to some other local school districts in our tax rate. And you'll, you'll see from the bar chart there that we're the low, second from the lowest overall in taxes. But really, what I want to point out on this slide is if you look at the, the largest section on, for all school districts, for us, it's two dollars and seventy-two cents. That's the specific levy for the education fund. So that large, almost ninety-eight million dollar amount that I talked about in the, on the pie chart, that's the specific levy that goes to that. And if you compare that to most other school districts, we are very low in what we tax for revenue for, for actually educating our children. So then we moved on to the state revenue, which, which I could talk at length about. But the graph on the right shows general state aid. So state revenue to a school district is met up with several different pieces. The most significant in, could be changing for next year, but the most significant in the past is general state aid. The state formula says, a foundation district, which we are, to educate a student should be six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. You'll notice that amount has been held steady since two thousand and ten. No increase whatsoever for inflation. But at the same time, the, the line on the chart in front of you shows what the state actually paid. So they said that it should be six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars, but the revenue at the state level did not allow for that kind of payment to school districts across the state. So that shows what was actually paid out. Over the time of the proration, in this past fiscal year, was the first year in six that they actually paid the full amount in general state aid, it was over seven point six million dollars that the school district lost that was owed from the state standpoint. The other major piece of funding from a state level are called mandated categorical payments. Those are payments that, in the education fund, take care of our students with the most significant needs. There are special education programs. They're our special education programs. Those mandated categoricals also cover our transportation fund, which, you recall, we went through some major restructuring because of a deficit in that fund. Those payments from the state have not been coming as well. So we finished fiscal '17 in June with the state still owing us $5 million in those mandated categorical payments. Then kind of to the more current events is with the budget that was passed in Springfield recently, there's some good news in there, I believe, or we believe, for school districts, and that is, payments to schools will now be based on, they must be paid out under an evidence-based funding model. A significant improvement, in our view, from a general state aid model. The catch is that the budget requires that to be in place to make payments, but that piece has not been signed into law yet. And just later, or late this afternoon, I heard that the plan currently is Senate Bill One is the, has passed the House and the Senate at the state level. They're going to wait now until Monday to put it to the governor's desk. And then the question is, what's going to happen there? So good news, evidence-based funding, looks like it's coming. Bad news still for school districts because here we are right at the end and still not certain that the payments are going to come on time. We, our understanding is actually the governor has to take action by August 3rd for the payments to be made from the State Board of Education on time this year. So then just briefly on the expense side, and again, this is just focusing on the budget and the, our largest one, the education fund. But what I really want to point out here is that 85% of our expenses are salary and benefits. So we are very much a people business. So anytime that there's lack of revenue or lack of funds for us, yes, we do our best to cut any discretionary spending, but really, to have any significant savings, it's people. And people mean programs for our students, it means larger class sizes, things that we certainly do not want to have happen. So the next three slides, I focus more on really what we're doing with our dollars and how we compare it to the state. And I want to apologize on these three. The data here, the last is from 2015, but that's the last data that's available from the source, the Illinois School Report Card. But if you look at the number of students per administrator, I'm sorry, I skipped forward. Instructional spending per student, we are significantly lower here at Unit Five than the average at the state level. Similarly, with the operational spending for a student, again, we're significantly lower than the state average. And then I believe a number, another important piece is the number of students per administrator. Again, many more students per administrator in our district than the state average. So what I hope that this speaks to is that at Unit Five, we do our best to stretch the dollars that we have as far as we can possibly do it. And then one of the final topics, and it's mostly driven by the state, the question out there is, without state payments, how long can you keep your doors open? And as I said recently to the newspaper, it's a bit of a complex answer, but to just look at one piece of it, if you look at our fund reserves, and how long could we run with just the fund reserves, it's roughly 60 days. I went through that, I believe, really, really quickly, but...
So, and as Jeff had mentioned, we're sort of in this world of education, and we use a lot of jargon, and, but we're very open to questions you may have that we can shed light on. So please, we're here to address those questions. Board members are welcome to also address some questions. So big days coming surely at the end of this month, and as it leads into August, much uncertainty still. And we are not certain yet whether or not we're going to see funding flowing when school starts. And our school start date is August 16th. So with that said, what Marty has indicated is we will open our doors, and we'll continue to open our doors until we can no longer do so. And surely, that will not come to pass. But at the same time, we're in a, we're in a reality now that is totally unknown. And we have never experienced this in the state of Illinois. And so again, us working together with greater awareness and perhaps also the conversation that may happen to some of our state leaders. So any questions?
May I make a comment? Just a couple of points, I think, I wanted just to kind of re-clarify. So on the proration piece of, so for the last, well, up until this year, the last six years, seven years?
Seven years.
We've been at a proration of 89%. And what was it, last March or the March before, we were actually in, through our budget, and we were told that a 2% additional proration was going to happen as we were through our fiscal year by eight, nine months. So that proration piece has also been sort of steady, and then it turned a little bit worse, which is the unexpected, right? The other piece is the unfunded mandated piece. And so one of the things that we do receive on a weekly basis usually is a list of bills that are out there, different things that are potentially happening. And a lot of them are mandates that are unfunded. And there are hundreds of unfunded mandates that come through. And to me, those are sometimes the, I understand why they would want to put them through. And one here recently that hasn't been pushed through, but it's been on the books, is they talked about putting three-point harness seat belts in all school buses. There's, you know, argument for and against for safety, but figuring the cost of that, it's in the potential millions of dollars to be able to do that. Example where it could get pushed through, if it ever did, without potential funding coming with it. So, you know, there's a lot of that that goes on that we struggle with quite a bit. I just want to kind of point that out, that it's, they happen all the time, and they're not well-known. Some of them are smaller, some of them are bigger, but they're, they've been a constant for years, and there's been a lot of discussion around that unfunded piece of those mandates.
I would say, Mike, that we face the same issue from our state, that we are offered, handed requirements and things that we must do without any dollars attached to it. They say, we demand you do this, but good luck paying for it, right?
Well, and, you know, and to the piece about the special needs and transportation, the two areas that they've hit us with and not paid are two critical areas in our district. To say, you know, you need, you have to transport these children, but we're not going to give you the funding to fully transport them, and our special needs student that need all of that help, we're not providing you the funding. And it's, quite frankly, it's really a shame on the state for that.
And Mike kind of alluded to this. With the cycle of the school year, we start the beginning of the year with so many teachers. So then if we suddenly lose $5 million midway through the year, we can't simply cut, what, 40, 50, 60 teachers in March for the rest of the year. That just can't happen. So we're kind of, it's kind of like being pot-committed on the first day of school. You can put more in, but you can't take any out.
Interesting. Ethel?
Question for you. Marty, could you go back to that one slide? There was kind of that set of three that showed us versus the state average. It was instructional, yeah. What caught my attention there was, and I realize it's two years old, but the 5,600 to the 77. Why do you think that state average is so much higher? Who's spending more money? That's what I was wondering.
There's certainly districts that are more affluent than ours. And then there's certainly some districts that are, have a higher poverty rate than we do. I think, I can't answer exactly what speaks to the higher number, state average, but I suspect that poverty rate affects that number to some extent, because a lot of the state funding is geared toward, through the GSA formula, there's a regular GSA, and then there's a poverty grant. So there's specific dollars that go to the districts with the most need, the highest poverty rates. So I suspect that that's part of it. I believe what accounts for part of our lower number is just the revenue cycle that we have been in, with the property value leveling off now, slow growth compared to high growth in the early 2000s. But during that time, we also had rapidly rising enrollment, which also brought more state dollars. So, but now we've been in this down cycle, so our revenue has declined, so therefore, we've been making do with what revenue come in, trying to balance the budget. And I think that speaks to our lower number.
Got it.
Poverty, I believe, speaks to at least a piece of the higher state average.
Interesting. Thank you.
And because of that, the formula, it's 20-plus years of age. That's why the evidence-based model is trying to address the inequity. Because there is a difference between rural districts, districts that aren't in the burbs and so forth. And for instance, if we would use the 27 elements, which are now part of the evidence-based model, what are the best practices? And the best practice, for instance, would be all-day kindergarten. We provide that in Unit Five. So we are providing a best practice. But there are districts that if we would compare today, there are some districts that are $34 million above the line, and we're $38 million below the line. That's per year. Now, that speaks to what our teachers and what our parents and what our students are doing to still be of a high level of academic achievement. And I would compare our kids as far as graduating from Unit Five schools to any student across the country. And I think, I heard one person say, the way I gauge success of schools is my child can go to any university or college, or their choice, if that's what they choose. And I think our kids have that opportunity. But that again, speaks to, but when you're looking at a $72 million range, that's rather significant. And so that's the piece of the evidence-based model. It's trying to become, it's trying to direct dollars where there are high needs, trying to still hold all districts, you'll hear the hold harmless piece, so at least all get the same amount of dollars. And the two bills that are sitting out there right now both do that. But it is controversial because one bill does have a block grant that's going to CPS, which seems to be the linchpin. That's, we can't quite fit that. And that's where the discussion's going to be. Quite frankly, and I've talked with other superintendents across the state, we want settlement. We want a compromise, and let's work through this, but hold true to the evidence-based model. That was an extensive amount of work done during the past year, bringing really businesses and government leaders with, and with educators, providing consulting and input in that direction. Which was a very different process, because in the past, it was led by educators, and then it would go to the legislators, and it was something that they couldn't really, I would say, again, we are two different worlds. And to be up to speed on all the jargon and so forth, I think created the disconnect. Well, now we have the connect. Now it's just, let's figure out how to reach compromise, to do exactly what Marty said, enact a bill that allows us to distribute dollars.
Further questions or comments? Okay. I think we've covered everything tonight. Closing comments from anybody with an overview on what we've talked about here tonight? I think this is a good start. The fact that we're all sitting at a table, and, you know, a couple of things in your budget opened my eyes, that's for sure. I'm sure we can share some similar scary stories with you. But going forward, as Mark said, an MOU between the two bodies to start this project going. But if, if you're not on a committee, that doesn't mean you can't be active in this process. And I'm a big believer in, you know, good people think of good ideas, and great projects come out of stealing other good ideas. So poking around the United States and seeing what other communities are doing to work together with their school systems, I think it'd be a good look. RC?
Just one thought is, I've spent a lot of time looking around the table, and I think it says a lot to see both bodies seated here together, alternated, because the fact is, in the final analysis, we are all on the same team. And what we're trying to do, we're dependent on each other. And hopefully, the public sees that and gets that we are partners and we want to work together, and I think we can do some great things.
Mike, I kind of want to echo what Jeff had said about, you know, understanding what this is. And so I think we all need to work and make sure to continue to work to create the reality and not let the perception potentially run the show. Because when the perception runs the show, sometimes that's not a good thing. A lot of times, it's not a good thing. But we create that reality and hopefully create some reality and not maybe the perception of what maybe you thought, and vice versa. I think it's good that we open that dialogue up. And I know RC and I have had lunch, and, you know, we've talked about a lot of things. And I think that's good that we do this collectively as a group. So I appreciate the time and for all of you to come out and all of us to get together.
Great.
Mr. Mayor? Sure. I think the budget presentation that Marty gave is actually the perfect piece to highlight the importance of this partnership, especially given with what's going on at the state and federal levels. You know, it's important because we're emphasizing the importance of supporting our local folks here. You know, Normal has a vibrant uptown with local businesses owned by, you know, people that live in town. We've got Green Top Grocery, which I think a lot of you are owners of. Farmers bringing foods not only to restaurants and grocery stores in towns, but farmers' markets and CSAs here. And this partnership, I think, will serve to strengthen our locality and points to a future where, you know, the political winds at the state and federal level won't have as much of an impact here locally, because we're working and taking the steps to strengthen our sovereignty here and taking care of our own and taking care of our neighbors. And that's something I can wholeheartedly support.
Further comments before we go to an adjournment?
Yeah, I'd just like to, real quick, you know, say, thank you all for coming out. And I mean, this is, as well as symbolic, it also is a good step forward. I think from the budget presentation, you can quite clearly see that 80%, a very large percentage, right, or 69% of our funding comes from the equalized assessed value. And back to, you know, I served on the planning commission here as well, is, you know, that those decisions that we make locally have a, you know, have a great impact on the funding, you know, at the school district. And so in a time where the state is in the state that it is, right, you know, it comes to us locally to be able to make as many decisions as we can that are going to be beneficial. And I think this is a great first step to continuing that relationship, and I look forward to seeing this committee, you know, working together in the future.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I think we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. You. Before he took his job, probably.
Yeah. Likewise.
Yeah, I think that was the third time we've been through it, so.
We're fortunate.
No, no, you're right. We did it here.
It's only three years.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.